I was told.
Last thing, sorry. If you guys prefer to be live, uh, if you guys are about ten minutes late, we can make sure you go live, but if not, uh, when, uh, my professor says it's school committee won't be done yet, so this meeting won't go live.
Yes, well, I like that a lot.
Sure.
Yeah.
My wife will initiate that. We don't have an audience of one.
Yeah.
So.
Mine dad before he passed would watch the meeting and then he'd watch the week like that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, all the time.
Instead, you wanna get up to my wife? You look good. Thanks.
Hi, Justin.
Oh, yeah.
Why don't I do something?
That was like stable, like to do something else. I suppose that's why they got so busy before. Because they all do it so much.
Yeah.
It's like you are playing one. I want to show you like.
Hey.
They sometimes come up on this stuff so hard in my head. Who's coming? Shoot. Yeah, apparently I tore my ACL. No, I'm not. The same. I walked on it, jumped on it, I didn't even know, I tore it for two months. It was so bad. I think it just, I had very high tone, okay, it just doesn't feel right. And I was like, oh, and then eventually I was like, okay, I'm gonna go get a check.
Do you need a chair or a elbow?
No, uh, yes, it's one of the things that one day I just, I don't know what come for me.
Yeah.
I looked at my son, like, Daniel, like seventeen year old, black belt, I looked at him like, I'm gonna take you down.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. And then he go, no, and then he took me down.
Not right.
And then like, ah, ah, like so bad. And but I don't know, I was like, I just feel like, I'm gonna take you down today, I just feel like today, so. Oh, but so much pain. And it was like over two months ago.
And, yeah.
I was in really this whole, like, two, three weeks now, I was like, I'm gonna walk, so I was like, I'm just gonna go.
Hello.
All right. But then I was like, no, you're really sound, I'll do a scope, and it's like, no, it doesn't feel right. It's like, oh.
Sorry.
We've been doing the video now, but I think we're doing it.
Hi, I saw that line, we need to the other room.
We went to FRS, and then the lights are missing, see, I'm just supposed to stay on, they wrapped up.
It's like forced it.
It's always gonna wait for that.
Yeah. I don't explain why it doesn't feel right.
Um, there's one, just this meeting.
Yeah. Thank you. Showing animals, like, I need to get it so great, like, as soon as possible, in case it gets like, every so little off, I'm in trouble. I was like, even like, boy, I went to the, I went to the doctor, before the MRI was up, I was like, I'm trying to get some money. I was talking twenty minutes.
Yeah.
So today, how you doing?
I was like, oh.
So we gave you the license, which was, you know, over there, that being, you know, you all this. I didn't care, you were waiting, and then guys were pushing, sure, and we're getting here, so, is that crazy? We have put the days on.
He says six to twelve.
Oh, yeah.
But I feel like, I would be able to hop around.
Yeah, we have a tree, and, uh, help me see with the, it was ten minutes, I thought that it depended for the time.
Because what they do is they take them.
Is it kind of not yet?
I thought so.
Look, we forward, there's, there's, there's not, there's not, there's not a lot of people walking around.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's.
They're all together. They have it over here. I just feel like, I was like, that's why you're not.
When you watch the wall, it's like, oh, it's. I can't come in, I can't, but it must be. I was so proud, I think. He was spending, you know, he would take him four hours a day just driving back and forth, he'd go one night, he'd go three nights, because every time. At least I don't feel, like, at least I'm.
But that, you know, you want to be.
He was stuck. But I would be out for that.
Even right.
Yeah. When you drive, they like to. Because they have to. Kind of stretch that, so. That's my good.
Well, coming from the ball, I mean, traps on. I found it all swayed, my. Yeah.
Trying to wrap up stuff.
Yeah.
Called, like, texting, paying attention, you find the call, and that's, she's.
And then go down to the senpai, you see, it's basically a closet that was three full.
No, I have a question.
Last thing.
We never came. America can't receive. Overall, with.
All right, let's see that.
Okay, so they were just like. They wanted to like.
Everyone just started standing. I know, but I thought it was usually Christine.
She, she always.
She has seen the tree?
Yeah.
That's what we're having.
Yeah.
If you see, just put it on. Stop it from.
Of course, that's.
Today, all five of you will go to the place, because two hundred and one. So, uh, yeah, there are five, one of the members who have any big rights, up to five, and, um, when people are out there, they're going to go to their.
Basically, if we had six or seven, then the chair would go, and eight would fall in, and then both on the front.
Oh, oh.
That was a people now.
Yes, it's.
Correct. I asked them, like.
Better, this part of the doctors, yes, I guess. But kids.
Yeah, yeah, they'll be very young, they are, they need, so.
But, but, but I've heard the same.
He's also my candidate, so he can move his up. So this.
You see a woman on.
So, man, yes, yeah, I finished on the, they say, if we start, if they start, they want to, they want to.
Okay, I'm. I don't.
But it was not a hard, short life. So, just getting the strength, if you're not sure why, they go to.
Anyways, okay. Good evening, and welcome to the Lowell Planting Board for Thursday, June twenty second, twenty twenty, tw- three. First matter on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for June fifth. Any of the board members have any comments or corrections on the minute? I believe it was myself, Mr. Fichette, and Caleb here, so we'll be voting on that matter. Any questions?
No, no questions, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Oh, second. Motion being second, all in favor say aye. Chair votes yes. I'm to approve, it's noted. Okay, moving along, we have a few matters that continue public shade tree hearings. The first matter is a public shade tree hearing for ninety Gorm Street. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter eighty seven point five, and Chapter two sixty of the Lowell Code of Ordinance, the Lowell Planting Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposed removal of one locust tree approximately twelve inches located at, where the DBH located at thirty Gorm Street. The removal of this tree is necessary in order to perform tasks involved in the construction project, including granite curb removal and reset the ADA compliant sidewalk construction. We did receive a memo, which was sent to Paul St. Seer, DPW Commissioner, from Ting Chang DE City Engineer, and from Daniel Lewis. The subject for this matter, the city proposes the removal of the one tree located at the address. The overgrown root system lifted and damaging the existing asphalt sidewalk creates a significant tripping hazard in addition to an already non-ADA Americans with Disabilities Act compliant sidewalk. The removal of this tree is necessary in order to perform the task involved in this construction project, including granite curbing removal and reset the ADA compliant sidewalk construction. The tree removal in this area will be replaced, please see pictures attached. Anybody here, on behalf of the applicant, to speak for the tree removal?
Good evening, Ting Chang City Engineer. On behalf of, this is part of the city's ADA's rammed sidewalks project. We will be installing concrete sidewalks along this locations. As you see the, in the picture, the tree itself and the roof have uplifted, and the, behind the, um, tree, the sidewalk is insufficient to meet ADA compliance with, so unfortunately we have to remove this one to put in proper sidewalk in compliance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of the tree removal? Anyone in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? Any of the board members have any questions or comments?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Fichette.
Just a question, because one of the things we're trying to do is obviously is, um, replace any trees that are, that are being removed. Is there any possibility of still being able to comply with the ADA requirements and reset the curbing, but, but replace that tree at that location by any chance?
Usually, when the tree get to a certain size, it's very hard to relocate, once we dig it in, and the tree get damaged, the roots get damaged.
Yeah, no, I would understand that, I guess planting a new tree, a species that probably wouldn't be as large, but still something at that location?
Probably will relocate it at the similar location, but will be closer to the curve, so that we will try to put it, it will be in the same proximity if it's not at the exact location. So, we were probably looking at, we'll be removing it and putting a small caliper tree and closer, a little bit closer to the curve to provide sufficient width in the back.
All right, that would, that's what I would prefer to see, because again, it does add something to the streetscape rather than taking.
Absolutely, we always try to replace it at, right the same spot or the proximity if we can.
Right, yeah, no, I, I appreciate that, because in the past, we have just kind of relinquished to the fact that you couldn't put something there, and it would be replaced within the neighborhood area, but if we could do that, that would be great.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Any other board members have any comment?
Yeah, only comment I have is, yeah, I went down and looked at it, and obviously, it does need to be removed, and, actually, in the bottom of that Gorm Street, there's hardly any trees at all on that, if you walk from there all the way up to the old Superior Court, I don't think you're gonna find many of them, except for when they're right, so, I'm definitely in favor of the tree removal. If any board members don't have any further comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry, clarifying question, is this a motion to approve with planting a new tree, though?
Yeah, as indicated by the, the engineer.
Okay.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion to approve with the new tree? Say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I guess, I guess we incorporate that as a condition of the approval.
Right.
Right, yeah, we wanna make sure.
Okay, so, I'm gonna get back up, so I made the motion, Mr. Fichette seconded it, all in favor say aye.
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 That matter is approved, thank you. Moving along, the next tree removal is public shade tree hearing, two two one Moore Street. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter eighty seven point five, and Chapter two sixty of the Lowell Code of Ordinance, Lowell Planting Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposal to remove one locust tree approximately nineteen inches DBH located above address. The tree currently blocks the path of travel in the sidewalk. The removal of this tree is necessary in order to perform tasks involved in the reconstruction project, including granite curb removal and reset an ADA compliant sidewalk. Again, we did receive a communication, I believe, um, this was to Paul St. Seer, DPW Commissioner, from Ting Chang DE City Engineer, and from Daniel Lewis, PE Engineer. The city of Lowell proposes to remove the locust tree approximately eighteen inches DBH located at two twenty one Moore Street on the corner of Sydney Street. The tree currently blocks the path of travel in the sidewalk. This and the overgrown root system lifting and damaging the existing asphalt sidewalk creates a significant tripping hazard in a non-ADA American Disabilities Act compliant sidewalk. The removal of this tree is necessary in order to perform the task involved in the reconstruction project, including granite curb removal and reset the ADA compliant sidewalk structure. Please, please see picture attached, and there's a picture for board's consideration. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Gint. This particular street is on Sydney, Sydney Street, Sydney Street is being redo, both, both side of sidewalks along, as well as the roadway itself. As you see on the picture, that existing tree is smack right in the middle of the sidewalk. Unfortunately, we have to remove that. With Sydney Street being such a narrow street to begin with, a narrow sidewalk, we would not, unfortunately, we would not be able to replace at this particular location due to the available space.
Thank you. Anybody here like to speak in favor of this tree removal? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? At this point, I'll turn over to board members, anybody in the board have any questions or comments or consideration?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Fichette.
Again, what we've done in the past, just so we have an idea, what would be the plan, then, to replace the tree somewhere in the neighborhood, or how, have we looked at this as to?
We have actually, I'm not sure is it exact neighborhood, but on, we have, with this particular construction project, we have other street that we're working on.
Okay.
Such as Hale Street, Carl Street. On Hale Street, we put in new, thirteen new trees, we will be putting thirteen more trees on Hale Street.
Okay.
So we're hopefully able to cover, even though we remove one on Sydney, we put some more trees within this whole project itself.
And that's already slated to go in with that project?
Yes, we already, we already form along the sidewalk, the tree pits are already formed, so.
Okay, good.
So, we'll be going in.
All right, and it's, and it's the general vicinity, and I mean, it's not, certainly it doesn't do anything to the streetscape, but I think that's almost like the lone tree around there.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fichette. Any other board members have any questions? Caleb, any questions? Okay, what's the request of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the removal of the tree located at two twenty one Moore Street.
Aye, second.
Motion on the floor, and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. The matter has been approved, five in favor, none against. Moving along on the agenda, we have a public shade tree hearing for East Merrimack Street and Brown Street intersection. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter eighty seven point five, and Chapter two sixty of the Lowell Code of Ordinance, the Lowell Planting Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposed removal of one locust tree of approximately eighteen inch DBH. The removal of this tree is necessary in order to perform tasks involved in construction project, including granite curb removal and reset, and ADA compliant sidewalk construction, and wheelchair ramp construction. Again, we did receive a communication to Paul St. Seer, DPW Commissioner, CT to Ting Chang, a DE City Engineer, from Daniel Lewis, PE Engineer. On the, on this project, the city proposes to remove the one tree located above address. The overgrown root system lifting and damaging the existing asphalt sidewalk creates a significant tripping hazard in addition to the already non-ADA compliant wheelchair ramp. The removal of this tree is necessary in order to perform the task involved in this construction project, including granite curb removal and reset the ADA compliant sidewalk and wheelchair ramp construction. The tree removal in this area will be replaced. See picture attached. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Gint. This particular ones, trees, as you see in the picture, all the roots have come up, it's very mature tree itself. We're gonna have a handicap ramps right at this location that cutting across Brown Street on, so unfortunately, this tree have to come, when we're doing construction, this tree will be damaged, it will be, have to come out. We do plans to replace this one, might not be at the exact same location, but will be at the proximity. We have to look at the location of the, or the existing utilities and infrastructure underneath, so make sure that there's sufficient room for it to grow for the new, at the new locations. So, but we are planning on replacing this tree.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of the tree removal? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? I'll turn the matter over to the board members. The only comment I have is, obviously, you can see it's, how you're gonna need the ADA compliance, especially where it's in front of a church.
Absolutely, yeah.
Makes it a little more travelsome, especially in the downtown area, a lot of people do use that walkway, so, I'm in favor, I mean, when I was out visiting the site, you can tell it, definitely digging up the sidewalk and everything else, those are my comments. Any other board member, comments?
Well, to your point, Mr. Chairman, I think I've stumbled over those roots several times myself over the years, so. Yeah, no, and, and, and in the proposal, what you're saying is you, you, you are replacing that tree in that general location, right? So, in that proposal, okay. All right, no, thank you.
Suppose my one comment, because aesthetically, as you can see, it does kind of match, and so wondering, you know, taking that out, and obviously, in terms of where it is, trees, as we know, also help to reduce, you know, noise pollution. And so, I guess I wonder a little bit about fixing that without harming the tree and the root system.
In that particular locations, because the, this area will be a very extensive construction to put in a proper handicap ramp, we will need to, to the tip downs, and then a flat area, so you will almost encroach into that spot. I'm not sure if we try to save the tree roof when we're doing, it's, we will have to shave the roof in order to make that surface to be flat enough to be ADA compliant, which mean that we have to cut into the root itself, and by doing that, the survival rates of that tree will be very, very minimal. And the other thing is, if we, once we put the sidewalks in, if the roots continue to grow, that means that it will pop the panel again, that's gonna make it a tripping hazard at that location.
Thank you. Any of the board members have any questions?
I, I just have a general comment about, it's really about all of these tree removals and replacements, just that I think the ADA work is really important, so I understand the kind of balancing the need for removing these mature trees in order to create sidewalks that will last. I think there's been really great work done in Lowell about that, and so it's exciting to see it continued, I think it's important for all pedestrians, including people with mobility issues.
Thank you, especially this location is right next to the auditoriums and near the hospital, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, near the hospital, I mean, the LRT, the MRT is there as well, and there's a lot of people that, that.
Use that, it's a very busy location.
And thankfully, there's still the row of trees as you look further down in front of, of the, the church in front of the fence. Obviously, it disrupts the rhythm of it a little bit, but, you know, as long as you can do something within that area, I think that's, would it, would it be possibly around the corner?
We will have to look into it, just look at all the underground utilities and all the stuff, and I will try to find a spot that's appropriate.
Understood.
Any further discussion for the board members? If not, what's the request of the board?
I make a motion to approve the tree removal and replanting a vicinity of the, where the tree is right now.
Okay, so we have a motion by Caleb, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Shanae, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Board votes yes, so that matter has been approved, five in favor and zero against. The next matter is for public shade tree hearings on Highland Avenue, number forty-nine, number fifty-four, and number seventy-nine Highland Avenue. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter eighty seven point five, and Chapter two sixty of the Lowell Code of Ordinance, the Lowell Planting Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposed removal of three trees located on Highland Ave. The proposed tree removal includes one maple tree approximately thirty-six DBH at forty-nine Highland Ave, one maple tree approximately twenty-four DBH located at seventy Highland Ave, and one locust tree approximately thirty-six inches DBH located at forty-five Highland Ave. The removal of these trees is necessary to perform tasks involving the reconstruction project, including granite curb installation, one point five foot wide grass strip construction, and ADA compliant sidewalk construction. So we did receive another communication to Paul St. Seer, DPW Commissioner, CC Ting Chang, DE City Engineer, from Daniel Lewis, PE Engineer. The city of Lowell proposes to remove the three trees located on Highland Ave, addresses as indicated in the front part of the memo, the existing overgrown root system and. The existing overgrown root system and location of the trees either block the path of travel to create a significant tripping hazard in the non-ADA compliant sidewalk. The removal of these trees is necessary in order to perform the task involved in this reconstruction project, including granite curb installation, 1.5-foot wide grass strip construction, and ADA compliant sidewalk construction. All trees removal in this area of the road and sidewalk reconstruction will be replaced. Please see pictures attached. So we will start in the ordered location. We go with number 49, then number 70. Let's see, yeah. We go 49, 70, and 54, as they're located in the pictures ahead of us. And if we can hear from the applicant, please.
This is, Highland Ave is part of the roadway reconstruction project, one of the street that we will be redoing the entire brand-new roadway with our new cross-sections. This street's gonna turn one-way with sidewalks on both sides. Currently, there's sidewalks, part of the, part of the roadway, part of not. As you see that couple of the tree, especially 70 and 49, they are actually in the roadway itself. So obviously, we, unfortunately, we have to remove those. They will be in conflict with the roadway. 54, actually, we find out that actually is not within this right-of-way. It's in the private property, and we have to talk, communicate with the property owner. They want that to remove, so we can create sidewalks on that. We did get an agreement from them. With all these trees removed, we will be replacing them. Minimum, we'll be replacing at least three, potentially more along the street as we're going through the construction.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point in time, anybody like to speak in favor of the tree removals on Highland Ave? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. I'll turn it over to the board members. So I know when I was up there looking at the site, especially on number 49 Highland Ave, I spoke with the gentleman who lives in the house directly in front of the tree, and they said they were totally in favor of it because the last two years, they had the roots dig into their sewer system. They had to have the line cleared out twice, and they were very much in favor. And we talked for a little while, and you can show how the curbs all dug up and how the trees are indicating, how it affects the sidewalk as well as the neighbors who own the property, their sewer line. So actually, when I sat and talked to the gentleman, we did look at the other trees as well. And I didn't speak with any other neighbors who came out, but that neighbor seemed to be in favor of all the tree removals. But one question, so this is gonna be changed to a one-way street?
It's a one-way, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think when the neighbors mentioned that, and I talked to a couple of neighbors on the street, so we'll be going down the street?
Park to Pine.
From Parker Street down would be one-way?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. So, did you say, will you, once you do it, will there be sidewalks on both sides after or on one side?
Sidewalk on both sides. Packing on both sides, one-way going down.
Okay, thank you. And the board members have any questions on number 49 Highland Ave?
I have a question for Fran.
Sure.
Can you remind me what the significant tree threshold is? I thought it was 24 inches, so these trees are a little bit bigger.
Yes, 24 inches.
So I think that these three trees would qualify as significant trees, and so if, if I'm remembering right, that they should be replaced at a two-to-one ratio. And so I just wanna just note that, that I would be in, you know, obviously support of replacing these at a two-to-one ratio. So replacing the three trees with six trees.
Per the tree ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, we'll pay attention to that. The 54 Highland Ave, it's a private property tree, actually. It's not in the right-of-way. We find that after we thought was within the, within the right-of-way, and we went out and do some quick survey, and we find out that the one in front of 54 is a private tree. And the property owner agrees, saying that she want that removed. So I don't know, is that any, make any difference on the number of tree that required to remove?
I thought even if it's on a private property, it still has to be replaced at the same ratio?
So a public shade tree is a tree that is either fully on public property or abuts public property, because the part of the canopy is on public property. So both are considered public shade trees.
Okay. We will, we would definitely replace two-to-one then.
Thanks, yeah.
Does anybody have any further comment on? We'll take them one at a time, on number 49 Highland Ave. Anybody have any further comments on 49 Highland Ave to replace the tree? So I think, Sinead, they want to have it replaced with a two-to-one ratio? Okay. You want to put that in the form of a motion?
Are we going tree by tree? I wasn't sure if we were making one motion for all three?
I think we'll do one at a time.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that the tree at 49 Highland Avenue should be replaced at a two-to-one ratio in accordance with the tree ordinance. And I approve the proposal with that condition.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion is, Chair votes yes, that motion is approved. And so now we'll go to number 70 Highland Ave, the proposed tree removal. Anybody like to speak in favor for number 70 Highland Ave? In favor? In favor? In favor, hearing none. Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. I'll turn the matter over to the board members. Have any questions for number 70 Highland Ave? Any questions on that removal? So this one will be, be replaced with a two-to-one ratio as well?
Yes, I mean, for this particular project, we would try to replace two-to-one at this location. But if, I'm just gonna, I wanna add to is, if for some reason, this particular street cannot be two-to-one, we will plant at other location for this project as well. So there will be minimum six trees will be planted for this project, either at Highland Ave or some other location within the project.
Okay.
And that's been our practice.
Yep.
They try to do it on-site or closest to their law. Anybody else have any questions on number 70 Highland Ave? If not, what's the request of the board for 70 Highland Ave?
I'll make a motion to approve the request with the condition that the tree be replaced in the vicinity at a two-to-one ratio.
So we have a.
Thank you.
A motion by Sinead on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Allison. All in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes yes, that matter has been approved, five in favor, none against. Moving along to the last matter is number 54 Highland Ave. This is the proposed tree removal as well, where we had discussion on before. Anybody like to speak in favor of number 54 Highland Ave? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, hearing none. This time, we'll turn it over to any of the board members. Have any questions or follow-up?
A question, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Is there any special treatment where this is on private property? Is there any, something the city needs to do differently, or is?
No, it's because if it's the proximity to the new sidewalk it will be, so it will be damaged, it will be almost enclosed to it.
Yeah, I understand, and I'm assuming the resident that lives there is, is agreeable to have this removed, obviously.
We got the agreement from hers to remove that.
I guess, because it would be interesting if we were in a situation where the resident did not want to have it removed, I guess would be the, would be an interesting scenario. But okay, no, so but as far as from your perspective, there's nothing.
There's nothing.
If that has to be done, okay.
It's rental property, the people who live there don't own the house. That's what the neighborhood, that's the street, told me. But, so, so it's less maintenance at that point.
Yeah. So it's indicated they spoke with the owner of 54 Highland Ave, and they're in favor of having it removed as well. So what's the request on the board to have the tree removal of 54 Highland Ave?
I will make a motion to approve the tree removal with replacement to two-to-one ratio.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Sinead. All in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes yes, that matter is approved, five in favor and none against. That concludes a, our tree hearing. And thank you very much for coming down to speak on these matters.
Thank you, good night.
Appreciate it very much. Okay. Moving along on the agenda, we have, let's see, let me just hold my next set of minutes. Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have a definitive subdivision approval for 38-40 Swift Street. The applicant is seeking definitive subdivision approval to split the existing lot into two lots and construct two residential units. The subject property is located in the traditional two-family zoning district and requires definitive subdivision approval because the two lots have 70 feet of frontage where 80 feet is required. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kenneth Lanier, Cornerstone Land Associates, representing the applicant this evening, 505 Capital Partners. As you had stated before you this evening, to separate a lot from 38-40 Swift Street. It's a two-family dwelling, and we're looking to subdivide a second two-family lot from the existing parcel. In order to do so, we did have to approach the Zoning Board of Appeals to receive frontage variances as we were short frontage of approximately 10 feet on either lot when we separated the parcel. We received that variance approval, I believe, on, it was granted June 27th of 2022. And as of last Thursday, we did get an extension on that variance approval for six additional months just so that we could finalize this definitive subdivision with the planning board and provide us enough time to obtain a building permit, which would then satisfy the zoning requirements. I don't know if the board has had a chance, but I did include a copy of the site plan from the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, as well as the definitive subdivision plan. It's fairly straightforward. We did go back and forth with the ZBA on a number of items, including the architecture of the structure, which was verified both with Steve from the Historic Department, just to verify that.
That's Steve Stoll?
Yes, yes, Steve Stoll. Just to verify that what we were proposing would fit in kind with the neighborhood. And that was agreed upon by Mr. Stoll and then approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I'd be glad to answer any questions on this project at this time.
Ken, I think we had one set of comments from June 6th. I think most of them from Dylan was just giving us the background, except for the applicant shall submit and receive a site plan to DPD that includes the front sidewalk and calculations of impervious covering landscape area prior to applying for the building permit?
Yep.
Has that been done, or that's something you're willing to do?
That is absolutely something we're gonna do prior to applying to the building permit.
And he just states, you know, the subject was located in the two-family divided existing lot, tells us what the frontage is, and the existing frontage on Swift, feet range from roughly 30 feet to roughly 85 feet.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. There's a number of properties on Swift Street. These two parcels that we're proposing are probably two of the largest with frontage and air.
I noticed most of, by looking at the plan and looking at the dimensions, I noticed most all the properties on that street are basically really close right up to the street, aren't they?
Absolutely, sir.
Yeah, so I mean, I see where you have, the Cowan House is up to the street, but it looks like the one you're proposing to do will have more of the front yard setback, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right, all right. So at this point in time, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody this evening like to speak in favor of the definitive subdivision on 38-40 Swift Street? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? That portion of public hearing is closed. I'll turn it over to anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, hearing none. That portion of the hearing is closed. I'll turn it over to any of the board members who have any comments or questions for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure, Mr. Fisher.
So luckily, I don't sit on the Zoning Board of Appeals, because, and I understand the amount of variances that you needed to, to propose what you're looking to do here. And when you look at the existing pattern of the development in that area, but part of the, part of the reason the zoning exists the way it does is to kind of limit infill development. That was done intentionally, and so again, we've, in recent years, we've, we've been more lax on the variances in relation to that. So we're here just for subdivision approval. You've gotten your approvals for the variances, as well as the reduced lot area. That was another thing where you can go two directions and come before the board here. I did look at the ZBA package. It's not part of our approval, and I understand that, but I do like the changes that were made to the.
Site plan.
The site plan and to the house itself. So I, the pictures, and I saw how it, it progressed from your original proposal. So I think that that, and of course, that's been approved by the ZBA. That's what you're, that's what you're building on the site, so.
Absolutely, yes.
As, as far as a subdivision approval, from what I see, it was pretty straightforward from, from what we're doing here tonight. We've already received the variances, and this is what's being presented. So I have no issue with what is being presented, Mr. Chairman.
Ken, do you have a picture of the architectural design?
I do, yes, sir.
Did you take a peek at that? I know, and we want to make sure that what we see is kind of, is consistent with the neighborhood when we come to the definitive subdivisions. I know Jerry handed me a copy, but I'd like, it's good to. Could you approach? And then we'll pass, it'll be a party see it better that way, if you don't mind? Thanks, Ken. I can see this a lot better, thank you.
So, so Ken, so now I'm confused, though. Is that your final, so what was on the ZBA? I thought this was the final plan, so now. Right, is this, is this the final? Or am I wrong?
This old one says 2A22.
Yeah, I think that says, I really have no idea.
Let me see.
I'm blind.
No, let me see.
31422, maybe?
Down here. Yes. Was that it?
Top to top. I think it's three, so yes, that would be the.
I have the current one, right? Is that correct? Yes, so you can see the iteration, I mean, you can see this from here. Yeah, this is, this is much better with the bump outs, right? This is what I.
Yes.
This is what I saw as the final version. And again, we're not approving that here tonight, but again, I think that that's. We've got reduced lot sizes. That was the whole idea, having a special permit where we have that review. But that was kind of handed over to the ZBA with the application.
I don't know if they have.
Yeah, no. No, we're gonna pass it now, can you send this over to the architect? We'll get, Sinead, she has to look that over and weigh in on her expertise.
And again, that's not what we're voting on here tonight.
No, but I mean, but we'd like to see what it, look to see if it's gonna fit in the neighborhood. I mean, it's very helpful. So if you drive by in the future, if it gets approved, like, is that what we approved?
You know, that, the whole reduction of that lots frontage frontage was a very controversial issue. It all happened on Livingston Street. We had changed the zoning code, and it was a by right A and R lot, but we had reduced with the changes in the zoning code the lot sizes, and they came to the city council and it got introduced again, but with the ability to go to, to apply for a reduction of a, you know. There'd be some oversight as to what gets built.
Right, absolutely.
And as Fran has to constantly remind me, there's two paths to go on this. You can, you can go for the variance with the ZBA, which you, which you did, or through the special permit with the planning board, so we've, we don't have that purview to, based on the way you
You'd think they would tighten that up in the bylaw, but
Have you done with that? Sinead will pass it. Want the other board members? That's the new architectural design that, that's the one that's been approved by the zoning board, I believe? So I did pick up on here, Ken, about when they had the Zoning Board of Appeals, it was approved in June of two thousand and twenty-two. I see we have the extension claim. We know we've dealt with that in the past, and you're very, very familiar with that.
Absolutely.
So I had a question on that, and then I put down with the extension.
Got it.
Because we realized they lapsed sooner than we anticipated.
We didn't, yeah, that was, that was new to me.
Yeah, I know you know very well.
Yes, sir.
That has to be one of the largest remaining lots in that area.
I mean, I've done some decent amount of work in that whole neighborhood, and that's the biggest lot that
Yeah, no, I was shocked when I turned down that street.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
It's wild that it's still sitting there. It's been there for so long, you know?
I mean, I was looking at the lot, and I said, you know, it'll fit in with the neighborhood, and like and now you say, I don't know how when you build it, how you get everything down there and in there and out, because it's a tight street.
It is a tight street. I mean, it's still going to be one of the biggest lots on the, both of them are going to be one of the biggest lots on
Hopefully, it's being built in the seasonal weather where there's no snow.
Yeah.
It's going to be tough if you had snowbanks going down.
Well, the nice part about it, too, is it, it does have plenty of parking.
Well, that was the big thing with me is on this. If this was a subdivision approval with not even, you know, with on-street parking, I would have to
I mean, they have at least four cars plus a garage.
No, it complies with the zoning.
Yeah, because where the house sits now with, I don't know what you want to call the overhang out there. It's a nice little location.
Yeah, that's a beautiful grape. They've been growing
Yeah, the minds, and it goes, what do you want to call it, canopy or whatever you want to call it?
And that's all staying. None of that's changing. That's all staying.
I got out and walked them out and looked at that for a little while. At first, me coming down, you're like, there's a lot that big, and boom, there it was.
That's
And the sign was there, obviously, as you know. Okay, so everybody had a chance to look at the renderings that had been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Any other board members have any questions? Hearing none, I think there's no further questions, so we, the only the only thing we're voting on tonight is the definitive subdivision approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the definitive subdivision for thirty-eight forty Swift Street.
The motion's made. I'll second the matter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All board members vote in favor. The motion carries. The matter has been approved.
Excellent. Thank you very much, folks. Have a great evening.
Ken, take care.
All right.
Okay, moving along on our agenda, we have any other business notices or further comments from community preservation committee members? Any of the board members have any further comments?
Nope, no comment.
Nothing commented on the preservation committee?
No.
Okay, Jevie, anything from NIMCO?
Nothing from NIMCO, but I will just say that last night was another city master plan meeting that I let Fran elaborate on that, but it was a, I think it was, it was a good session. It was, it was a little bit more of an intimate group talking about growth, and I think maybe Fran could even give us an outline of the timetable we're looking at at this point would be great.
Sure. So last night, we had our third public workshop. The first public workshop we did focused on, it was like broad visioning. The second one was focused on housing. This third one was focused on growth in the city, so recognizing that change in Lowell and development in Lowell is inevitable, but how would the community want to, want that growth to what would the community want that growth to look like? So we had four different tables that had sort of renderings of potential growth strategies in our industrial neighborhoods in Lowell, our neighborhood centers, so like Couple Square, Bridge Street, that type of a neighborhood, downtown, and then transit-oriented development, so the area near the Gallagher Station. So we had a lot of great conversation last night. The next few months, we are going to be kind of like putting our heads down and starting to work. So we've done a large share of the public engagement and are sort of slowing that down. But we'll, we're starting to develop the actual like strategies and action items that we'll be including as recommendations at the end of the plan. We will have one more public workshop in October, several more steering committee meetings, and the timeline for the plan, I believe we're about halfway, so the public engagement will wrap up at the end of this year. But then the first half of two thousand and twenty-four, we'll be working on drafting the plan, reviewing the drafts extensively with the community and city departments, and then it will be complete, and we'll start working on implementing it.
Will we come here for a vote? Will we come here for a vote, too?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you, Fran. Any further communication by board members?
It would be great if there would, if there was more of like an informative presentation, even if it doesn't come for a vote. I think that would be really wonderful.
Sure.
I don't know if others agree with me, but I think, you know, it doesn't have to be hours long, but I think like an informative presentation would be really useful for us.
We have a lot of material. We have a lot of slides at this point, so that could definitely be done. This summer will be tough. Dylan and I are still catching up on a lot of things from when we didn't have our computer, unfortunately.
Maybe even when it's drafted but not final or something like that, like I don't know.
The actual plan itself or
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, for sure. That will, that will definitely happen. But we can also provide a general update on sort of the process, too. I think that would be interesting for the board members.
So speaking about the cyber attack that happened, do you anticipate when people will be able to join us remotely in the future for meetings?
So we're waiting on city Wi-Fi to be restored. I don't know when that will happen because that's what we use in here to run Zoom. We have a hotspot in our office that they tried to take away from us, and I said, no, we need it still. So whenever we have our Wi-Fi back in City Hall, I can ask if they have an expected timeline for that, but once that is restored and we have, because we don't, the worst-case scenario would be to advertise the hearing as hybrid, have someone plan their whole schedule around wanting, around staying home and being able to zoom in, and then it not working. So that's why we wanted to just do fully in-person because we have, we want the internet to be stable here so that it's predictable for folks. But I will definitely ask.
Okay, so you keep us posted on that?
Yes.
Okay, there's no further communication. We can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion being second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Good night, everybody, and we are adjourned.